Bats.
Here.
Fyler?
Here.
Fox? Heck?
Here.
Patrick?
Here.
Kaufman?
Yeah.
Bob? Palmer? Briscoe.
So, the first item for this evening is honoring our retirees. We're gonna turn it over to Dr. Nesnik, but I'm sure it's an exciting time for some of these folks, but also a little bit of a frowning time for some of us here to see you leave. So, we'll turn it over to Dr. Nesnik and tell us more.
Yesterday, we had our end-of-the-year ceremonies, and we got to celebrate Teachers of the Year. Yesterday, we had our elementary Teacher of the Year was Holly Jo Torres, who is here this evening. Our secondary Teacher of the Year was Pat Slater, who's here in a moment. We'll talk about him as well. We had our Support Staff of the Year was Mary Snyder, our Transportation Coordinator. And then, there was a unique award that was started last year, the Superintendent's Award of Excellence, that was awarded to somebody that goes up and beyond consistently even when no one's looking. Last year was Paul Zerby, and this year it was awarded to Chris Hammer. And so, it was a nice day to celebrate our staff, the accomplishments, but we did end it by celebrating, but also in a sad send-off, our retirees. And one of our retirees this evening that we were hoping would be here, but has decided not to be here, is Mike Leiser. As you know, Mike's spent the last 19 years of his life at Topo Hocken, becoming a household name, a very important part of our district. And Mike, right now, is probably in the middle of a river fly-fishing, doing what he looks the most, but Mike certainly will be missed. And, you know, we are sad to see him go, but we're also very happy for the next chapter in his life. Kristen is here this evening and will be taking on that role, and so, we're excited. We started today, this morning, with our administrative retreat, our leadership team meeting, where we start goal-setting and planning and discussing topics of where we want to look ahead. Kristen was able to join us, so it's exciting. While we are losing one great leader, we're also gaining somebody equally as good, and we're excited to have Kristen on board. But tonight, unfortunately, Ellie was not -- Ellie Stickler retired last July. She was not able to join us this evening for personal reasons. Kay Hartram and Linda Heberling also had trips planned to celebrate their retirement, so they could not be here. And Joanne Faust had retired early in the year as well and could not make it. So, that leaves Mr. Slater. So, Mr. Slater, when I came the same year as I did, in August of 2015, and when I was introduced to him, I was -- Mike was very -- Mike Leiser took me on a tour and introduced me to Pat. I was very excited to talk about a Penn State football player that was gonna be on staff, former Penn State football player, who was a walk-on, and Mike did a lot of bragging about Pat. And I was impressed from the start, and I can say that after seeing Pat over the last eight years, I'm even more impressed by what Pat did and does. Pat started his career in September of 1986 in Redding School District, joined us, as I said, in August of 2015 as a PE and driver's ed teacher, but Pat's so much more than just a teacher. Pat is, in my opinion, what every educator should strive to be. It's not about the books. It's not about the content. It's about those relationships that are formed. It's about the connections that you make with people. And Pat has touched so many people's lives, not just at the student level, but his colleagues. And I think we can all say, I think the administrative team at the high school, Dennis and myself, the ones that have gotten to know Pat over the years, can say, "We're much better people because of having known Pat." This one is a tough retiree. The one that -- the other one that, a couple of years ago, was Ken Nowecker. And Ken was somebody who is very similar to Pat, with a simple fist bump touched so many lives. And I got to know Ken standing out in front of the building each morning and talking with him. But back in March, every year, we put out a professional intent for the staff, if anybody's retiring, if anybody's requesting moves. And I had known -- Pat had told us maybe two years ago that the date could be coming soon, and each year, when it didn't happen, you know, we were, you know, very excited that he was not retiring. So, when March came and we were approaching the deadline of the intent, Pat had not submitted his retirement, and I thought we were in the clear. And Pat mentioned that yesterday. But we are very happy for you, Pat. You have done a tremendous job in this district. And as I said, you're what every educator should strive to be. And, you know, I'm very fortunate that I've had the opportunity to get to know you, and I think our kids are extremely fortunate and lucky to have had the opportunity to just be in your presence and get to, you know, meet you, understand who you are, and build those relationships. And I think here's four young ladies who can attest to that. But, you know, I feel like I'm rambling, Pat, but I don't -- I don't -- I can't describe enough the loss and impact that Pat's retirement is going to make on the district. And, you know, people come and go in our business, but an impact like Pat and Mike are going to be huge. And, you know, when Ellie retired from -- had burned well, she was a huge hit to that district. And I think one of the things that makes Topo Hocken so special are people like the retirees here. You know, there's a lot of years of service. Joanne Faust was into her 80s and was still monitoring the cafeteria at PB and making connections. And the amount of lives that each one of these has touched, that's not something you can replace. That's not something that you can teach in a textbook or in a college class. It's something that happens naturally. So, congratulations on behalf of the district. We thank you for your service and wish you the best of luck.
Thanks.
So, at this point, we will transition to the business portion. So, I'm gonna kind of, in my report, I'm gonna flip Letter C to the first, since Mr. Slater is here. One of the things that, as much as Pat's, we talked about how you can't replace certain things of him, the one thing that we cannot replace or easily replace is the fact that he teaches driver's ed. And Pat has a skill set that not a lot of people want to have, I guess, because how many people want to get in a car with no control, just a little brake on the side behind 16-year-olds who have not a lot of experience driving, right? But Pat has offered to continue on and stay on and help us with the driver's ed. We do the behind-the-wheel. Pat's certified through PENDOT, so is Trevor Brown, our other driver's ed teacher. But Pat has said, "Hey, I'm -- I'm gonna retire, but I still want to stay working for you if I can." The unfortunate thing is, Peters does not make it very easy for retirees to stay on the system. And so, one of the things that I think a solution that we have, that PENDOT is willing to work with us, the Department of Ed is willing to work with us, is the potential of using a substitute service, our STS. Now, I have not approached them yet, because I wanted to kind of talk this through with the board, the idea of potentially keeping Pat on, be able to fulfill that obligation, but looking to alter our contract with the substitute service to see if Pat could be employed through the substitute service. There would be, you know, typically, there's a fee for using them, but it would allow us -- the conflict comes in is, we're a public entity that helped fund the retirement system, and when somebody retires, they really don't want the public entity continuing that, but a private entity we can partner with. And so, Letter C is the driver's ed discussion, but really, what I'd like to do is explore the idea of keeping Pat on board, but kind of third-partying it through our substitute service. Right now, I don't know that Trevor Brown can fulfill all of the need that we have. We have a unique opportunity where kids can get, through Pat and Trevor, get their license by going and driving, and then they can certify them through their test and be able to issue the license, and it's a unique service that we offer as addition.
Do you need to explore any option to keep that program on? So, that's a two-value.
Thank you, Mr. Slater. It's great that we're doing that, and I'm interested to hear what we've got.
On the teacher's ed, what does it cost us?
I don't know if you're negotiating with a rate with that for it.
It's -- it is contractual, so it's outlined in the contract, the hourly rate, which is 25 an hour. STS usually charges a 30% markup that covers their fees, their benefits, et cetera.
And we would pay Peter, right?
Right, we would pay Peter, so in some respects, it's almost a wash.
Can we choose who we want to use to that system? Let's just say they expand upon it, and there's other people getting driver tests, and we only want to use Pat Slater.
Yes.
We can do that.
Yeah. What we charge families is $50. The driving portion of that, or that test, is six hours, correct? So, you're looking, the cost to the district to be able to have that piece is about $150, you know, straight time. Now, you got the benefits and all that tax on it as well, but we charge 50. And I don't know if that's something, at some point, the district would like to explore increasing, that said that helps offset those costs.
And is there still a, if I remember right, don't we get like $35 or something back from the state for every kid we turn in or something?
You have to give about $50.
Or something. I know there's some kind of -- because I -- we have to do a report. Like, I'll sit down with Trevor in July, at the end of fiscal year, and we have to do a report of every kid we tested, and that's submitted to the state, and I thought there was some kind of -- didn't cover even that $50, you know, so it's like $85, I think, was the number that sticks in my head, and I could be wrong on that, and it could have changed.
Worth every penny if it prevents accidents and sort of students.
It's a service you can't put a dollar value on. It's too important to the community and, you know, trying to get kids to be safe. Also, as hard as it is to get driver tests at some of these locations now, it makes it awful handy for, you know, helping parents out, or Pat, and it does too. So, it doesn't -- you can't put a value on it too important.
I know, um, to do a code through the KGO3 to get their kids their driver's license. I was like, "Gotta be worth it," because my kids want to do the program, at least get a new license, so I --
There's not many things I'll say that about, but that is more.
How many other school districts in the county have the opportunity?
I believe, years ago, we talked about possibly changing the part of the KGO3 that that part of it goes on the board. Might even pitch out or squeeze out.
I don't really -- I'd say do the testing.
Mullenberg, I think there's about six, six or seven of the 18. Mullenberg does it. I believe Wilson still has it. Some of the bigger schools, Redding dropped theirs. That's one of the reasons I came out here, because I was doing it in Redding, and was able to come out here. But I think there's only about six, and some of them just do the classroom portion, and then they'll subcontract with like a Cardinal or a Wolf Driving School to do the behind-the-wheel.
We received $2,090 from the state, and $3,500 from the driver's ed group this year. $2,000, $2,090 from the state.
About 30%.
Classroom.
Or, roughly, sorry, here, how many kids do you do?
Well, we had down a couple of years, but we usually do it between 90, 80 and 90. I think we're gonna be a little lower this year, probably closer to 70, because we have a couple shut down, you know, a couple breaks in there where we could get kids down.
So, you cover about half of us.
Yeah, this does about 70, 75.
And another perspective, we -- I think this came up a couple of years ago, was that this is a service that we're buying, and not, it's not meant to be a moneymaker or a -- and I think it is a unique opportunity that we have. And part of, you know, when Pat came on, he got behind very quickly, only one person driving, and that's our fear with, you know, with Mr. Brown. You know, without Pat, we're gonna get behind pretty quickly and not be able to offer the services. And they're on that list, you know, months and months in advance, and they try to accommodate kids' schedules and their birthdays and where they're at, so, you know, if everybody's okay with it, I will explore this with STS, and what that would mean is, we would just have to amend our contract in with them if they're on board with it.
Are you gonna be certified, I mean, the type of program, if I get somebody else in at some point? You have to go through a PENDOT.
Alls you have to do is take practice for the driver's ed cert, and then you have to do an audit with PENDOT. Like, when I first got certified, I had to go down to DMV in Redding and actually spend a day testing with them. I'm not sure that Trevor even had to do that. There's just a -- every year, we get audited, and we have to go through a presentation, either in Harrisburg, or the last couple of years, in fact, we put it online.
Okay.
So, then, we also have an auditor come out and look at our course.
We have also looked at, we recently talked with the union leadership about putting it out to staff, that if anybody's interested in pursuing it and getting that certification, that the district would, you know, fund that ability to be able to get the certification to take the test if it's necessary. So, that's another avenue we're exploring as well. Thank you, Mr. Slater. The top of my report is a comprehensive literacy and math plan, and in a second, I'll turn it over to Dr. Matlak. The -- when we created the Director of Teaching and Learning position last spring, and we were interviewing at that time for the Assistant Superintendent position, and when we interviewed both Dennis and Tim, it became evident that these were two guys that we needed on our team. Their experiences complemented each other, their abilities and talents were perfect and were spot-on for what we needed. Part of their role is also working with their comprehensive plans, and part of that comprehensive plan is developing where we need to head, both in the mathematics field to raise our level of our scores, as well as our literacy, take a comprehensive approach of what does our programs look like, where do we need to head, where are deficiencies, where are our strengths? And that is the task that Dr. Matlak has been working on over the last year, working with a team of teachers and staff. And so, I will turn it over to him to present the literacy and math plans.
Good evening, everybody. So, as Dr. Nesnik just said, this is a culmination of about eight months' worth of work, mostly on a committee's behalf, and I'll recognize them as committees as we head again, because they deserve a lot of credit here. I do want to draw attention to something that we established at the very beginning in conversations with Dr. Nesnik. We landed on the fact that we're not trying to fix some -- there's nothing broken. So, I had come across a quote from something I'd been reading, and we kind of put that in the forefront with each and the times we met with our committees, that this is not a process of fixing. It's a process of studying, improving, and becoming a learning organization. So, we tried to keep that front and center. Just in terms of purpose, this is something that I think we presented earlier in the year, I think when we did our Dega presentation. It's something that Dennis and I tend to come back to with Simon Sinek, and the idea of having a purpose. So, effective organizations and effective people always start with a clear direction that guides efforts. So, that's starting with that golden circle, that in the middle, that Y. Having that clear and compelling intention behind what you're doing, it's really your mission. And then, from there, you're able to derive the how, your vision for your pursuit of that purpose, that mission. And then, lastly, you're able to think about, all right, so what? What steps do we need to take to accomplish how we're pursuing that Y? So, that's the basic approach of how we move through these two plans that I'm about to talk about here. Our purposes were these three things. We wanted to be able to identify that clear, shared purpose for literacy and math, period. Not just, you know, math program or literacy program, just what is the purpose of learning literacy? What is the purpose of learning math? To use that shared purpose then to direct our decision-making as we move forward from here on out. It will guide how we approach our curriculum. It will guide how we approach our instruction. It will guide how we approach our resource selection and our assessment practices. And then, ultimately, it was also the chance to have staff and administrative leaders coming together to develop that collaborative capital and that diffusion of knowledge to be able to share that responsibility. So, in a nutshell, the phases look like this. We first came together to develop a mission and a vision statement for our work, literacy and math. From there, we explored some guiding principles that were based in research for both of those. We did a needs assessment, where we gave all staff members who are involved in literacy and math instruction, a survey to get some information from them, that we then added as a layer to the original SWOT analysis that Dennis led us through at the beginning of the year, to have a really thorough understanding of where our needs are in math and literacy. Our committees came together to analyze those needs assessment results, and using that, we set and prioritized goals. We are now disseminating the plan to the board for approval, and then, as we move forward, I will use my coordinate opportunities to share with you any progresses being made monthly. So, I will start with our literacy plan. Our literacy purpose statement that we developed in our committee was that we believe that the gift of literacy is a fundamental right that fosters all learning through inquiry, insight, and inspiration. So, from there, we developed our vision statement for how we are going to pursue that purpose, and our vision statement is that the Talbokary School District will provide an immersive, literacy-rich environment built on a culture of reading, writing, speaking, and listening that relies on highly trained staff utilizing research-supported instructional practices built through sustained professional learning, coaching, collaboration, and reflection. That opens doors for learners to communicate through a well-articulated curriculum supported by engaging and comprehensive text materials. That meets learners' unique needs through purposeful data collection, that informs timely, specific feedback, and intentional instructional decisions. And that utilizes autonomy, mastery, and purpose to motivate learners to be doers and intellectual risk takers who find joy in reading. From there, we went through the needs assessment process, which I'm not gonna tape us all through now, because we all want to go home tonight. So, we developed three primary goals from that work. Our first goal for the literacy end of things is to engage in the sustained professional learning that is aligned to that vision that I just described. Our second goal was to analyze, revise, and align district resources to meet the expectations of the literacy purpose and vision. And then, third, to improve communication regarding literacy programs, progress, and successes across all stakeholder groups. These three goals were derived from the needs assessment data that in the full plan, which is either as it's shared or widely shared, I had the actual data there that you, if you'd like to be able to, through the pie charts of the data that we collected, those would be there. So, from those goals, for each of them, the committee determined action steps to meet each of those goals. This is just a sample of some of those action steps that we'll be taking. I know that the writing's small. So, for example, the first one was identifying the needs for professional learning related to literacy across all grade levels. You'll notice the timeline is night. We have already done that step. We did survey the staff again, something short, just to kind of get an idea for the committee to come back together, which is then that third step in August and September next year, to take a look at some of that data to be able to plan out. What kind of professional learning do we need? Where does it need to focus? And how do we plan out time-wise when that's occurring? And then, that second step was also accomplished before we left, that we gave an inventory for everybody to be able to fill out, that we are using kind of ancillary materials to the CKLI, for example, with our K5 literacy programming, that there are other materials that are being used, you know, supplement or to replace something because there's a need. We're just trying to have a trail of what things are we using, at what levels, so that we can have an informed conversation. And then, that last one there is that developing that long-range professional learning plan based off of the feedback that we got from the committee. So, I'll stop there for a second. Is there any question that you'd like to -- oh, okay.
The writing, part of the vision statement is about writing, yes, the writing on the computer, or is it also handwriting?
So, writing to me, and I'll speak for the committee, writing to us. Writing to us does not restrict itself to a computer. There is a lot to be said through physical act of writing. So, we know that we have a lot of opportunity for writing and improving writing, and it's going to start every day with what I well-termed low-stage writing. Not every writing thing that we do is, needs to be graded, needs to be assessed, that that daily practice of putting pens on paper is more valuable than doing a ton of formal writing and getting graded on. So, that's part of the focus, and we know that we have work to do with writing.
The other question, if not also, was on a vertical illustration, this is, I take it that everything you're doing here vertically aligns with the case in 12.
Yes.
So, it keeps building on each other, is that us reiterating some?
Yes.
I think we lose that sometimes.
We do. And that's part of the wording and sort of the steps that we're on in that sample one. Whereas, on the second goal, one of the action steps is to vertically align curriculum and skill progressions.
It seems like sometimes, the older grades don't know what's on beforehand, and then you're, they don't know where to start, and there's gotta be a coordinated path to that.
Yeah.
That's all.
Matt? This will look similar to the literacy plan. It was fun on my end, because I got to the end of it, and I promised I'd make it this way, but the conversations tended to just turn in the same thematic circles that the literacy conversation went in, in a lot of ways. So, our math purpose statement is that we believe mathematical understanding offers the power to view the world analytically and to apply problem-solving skills in infinite ways to navigate all learnings and contribute to communities. Our vision statement, Talbokary School District will provide an immersive math environment grounded in critical thinking and problem-solving that exactly word-for-word from the literacy one, relying on the staff, in research-supported instructional strategies, professional learning, coaching, collaboration, reflection. The second one is the same, that reveals the power of math through curriculum and instruction that supports number sets, procedural fluency, conceptual understanding, strategic confidence, and mathematical discourse while encouraging independence and perseverance. And then, the third and the fourth, but are also, all those word-for-word are the same from the literacy one. So, again, that was not forced, but it was extremely interesting how it turned out. Our math goals, again, also very similar to literacy, just in the mathematical realm. Goal number one is to engage in sustained professional learning designed for mathematical understanding, aligned to the district math vision. Goal two is to analyze math programming vertically at all levels to identify foundational skills and clarify skill progression in each. And then, the third one, align district resources as programming, human resources, and systems to maximize learning and improve and improve that process. And then, as a sample, we also did the same thing. We dovetailed a math section to our survey for professional learning needs to be able to get some ideas there about where people stood, and that also will be reflected when we come back in the new year for bringing that committee back. back together to develop a plan for professional learning. We also inventory it, again, just like with literacy, to understand what materials are being used or being seen in the classroom. That third bullet point is similar to what Mr. Colmway was just saying about literacy. It's similarly worded, that we would develop a career standard aligned progressive skills and expectations for K-12, especially as they relate to our content. And then that last one, we would select and align data sources for decision-making for the district vision and the expected skill progression.
How do we teach kids to learn math here and not here?
So...
And how are we going to do that? Because that, that is one thing that really bothers me.
So, the idea of, so number sense, procedural fluency, conceptual understanding, uh, strategic confidence, all rely on mental firsts. So, our strategic confidence especially is being able to develop mental math skills where they're appropriate and to be able to recognize at what point it breaks down and it is more time-effective and task-effective to pull out a calculator. If you have good mental math ability and then your fluency, most tasks, simple tasks, you don't need a calculator. When, you know, you're trying to multiply three seven-digit numbers, then yeah, take out the calculator and do the calculator.
I mean, main mental math is, it's one way to keep your students ahead of the, blah, 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 you know, maybe even go out and figure things out if you're going to be further ahead.
Yeah, and especially at the under-levels, having the number sense, that they're comfortable with numbers, they understand how numbers operate, you're able to then more flexibly move through those more advanced pieces later. Any other questions? So then, just in closing, I wanted to be able to thank board members for giving us a chance to make, take this deep dive into the doctor for places, say. I'd like to thank Dr. Nessing and Dr. Perk for being able to set the direction and have that spirit of collaboration and leadership and, with the teams. And then especially all the volunteers for each committee who volunteered their time and expertise over the last six months that we've been doing this. So, our literacy planning team that consisted of Dr. Nessing, Dr. Perk, myself, Mrs. Tenny, Mr. Hammerick, Mr. Bowers, who is here, our reading specialist from that elementary, this is Schlegel, this is Cox, this is Kramer, this is Torres, who's also here, this is Hammerick, this is Pollyak, this is Bonner, this is Pumble, this is Long, and Dr. Meg Norris. Dr. Norris is faculty at Quistown University and they're reading specialists in elementary programs. She and I have worked together in the past on a number of things. She was able to join us for a couple of sessions, give the lens and expertise, especially in literacy development as we were having some discussions. So, I appreciated her help with that. And then our math team, again, Dr. Nessing, Perk, myself, Mr. Gears, Mr. Lynch, Mr. Nice Winder, this is Klausler from Bethel, who's also here, this is Ritter, this is Keller, this is Becker, this is Davis, this is Klein, this is Ziegler, and this is Paul. We would not have had this product if not for those committees. It was a lot of work on their part and a lot of time beyond the school day that they dedicated to this. If there are any questions, I can take them out overall, otherwise...
Information.
So, that is something that we discussed along, along several pathways. We tried to set it at a quick, early pace, but we're also up against the fact that we know professional learning has been, keeps rising to the surface. We only have so much professional learning time at our disposal. And unfortunately, fortunately, unfortunately, especially at that K-5 level, you have teachers who are keeping both literacy and math. Junior high, high school, sure, it's easy to pull the English department, we're going to do this in math department. So, it's harder at that level to be able to say, you're doing both at the same time. And we have additional professional learning plans and needs that we're also working through. So, it's going to be a delicate dance of trying to not overwhelm ourselves or staff with too many things at once and to be able to pace it out so that your, our, our plan, we hope, allows us to leverage the logical first steps that will help every step afterwards be quicker and easier, if that makes sense. I can't give a definite like, we think it will be done by this point. It's more, it's going to evolve as we go. And I'll keep everybody up to date every month with the board report to be able to say, here's where we are, here's kind of the outlook.
And I think one of the strengths to this, to both of the teams are that they were pulled from all K-12, regular ed, special ed. And I think really, in the last eight years I've been, I think both of these committees are unique in that we've not done something like this and it relied heavily on the educators in that room to help set that direction, which is exciting.
That was going to be my comment. It's kind of cool to see us, quote-unquote, inventory what we're doing, just so we can learn where we're doing good, where we need to do better. Good job.
The next piece is to give you, the next part is to give you an update on where we are with the Portrait of a Trojan. If you remember back, I think actually dates back to the same time period of when we were interviewing for Assistant Superintendent, we were building the comprehensive plan. We talked about this Portrait of a Graduate. We always want our kids to have the skills up when they graduate, and they graduate. And I think the more we looked at that, the more it became evident that this is more than just our graduates. It's what we want all people connected to Tulpa-Hockin to be. And so it has morphed over the time to what we call the Portrait of a Trojan. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Perk to pop up.
So this is another one of those exciting pieces that we've been working on in the Alliance of the Comp Plan. Throughout this entire year, there's been a pretty consistent collaborative effort where a team of any stakeholders in the district has come together, you know, really looked at the same problems from different lenses and are working towards solutions that are rooted in what we believe, so that what we believe, you kind of transcended to how we practice and how we interact with students on a daily basis. The Portrait of a Trojan is a fantastic example that is working in parallel and in tandem with those, the literacy and math plan. And then ultimately, next year, it's going to start to analyze science and even social studies and some more in-depth pieces. But I want to start with our mission. Our mission is to plaster it all over the district, expect, believe, achieve our key critical components. And when we started looking at the Portrait of a Trojan, these are things that we want to highlight. So when we expect the most of ourselves in our community and believe in the inborn ability of all children to attain knowledge and skills necessary to realize their full potential life, we will achieve great things. In school, a lot of our focus ends up being on standards and skills. You know, we try to develop extremely strong competencies in literacy, in math, in science, and social studies, but we also value the well-roundedness of an education where art and music and physical education and health are also key contributing factors to developing somebody into a complete person. And when we look at our systems and we look at our curriculum and our instruction, our focus really tends to be on those standards because in some capacity, they absolutely have to be. But I think what we all know is that school is not just about what we're learning, it's about how we're learning too, right? There are skills and competencies that transcend just the academic piece. We are definitely trying to help students become extremely strong in math and literacy skills, right? We want them to be champions in each of our disciplines, but ultimately, we want them to be life champions. And school is not just about the what we're teaching, it's how. So, what we've been doing as a group, as part of the Comp Plan, as part of what started as a Portrait of a Graduate, is start to analyze, alright, how can we not just focus on those academic skills, but how can we focus on those human skills? Because the knowledge piece we're confident in, in terms of how we can develop curriculum and assessment and instruction, but how can we focus on the habits and the traits and the skills that are not necessarily academic in general? We've had a lot of conversation even in this boardroom where there's been a struggle to hire people in the real world who have habits and skills and traits that make for a successful person. Whether it be persevering or being resilient, or being difficult at times, being dependable, being committed, those skills, you're not going to find in a P.A. standard, but those skills and habits are necessary for someone to be successful. So the Portrait of a Graduate, or the Portrait of a Trojan, is a way for us to have an approach where we can identify those habits that we think make for a successful Trojan, and then we can also focus everything that we do, not just around the knowledge from a content standpoint, but also developing the habits that make for a highly successful person. So, similar, and you'll see a lot of similarities in some of our slides, we started with what our purpose is with this portrait. We were looking at, and what is our why that drives this work? And when we looked at our mission statement, we really believe that our mission statement is only attainable when we engage all Tulpa-Hockin Trojans and establish collective expectations that identify habits that we believe will serve all Trojans in their pursuit to achieving great things. Because this isn't something that we can do in isolation. Identifying habits that make for a successful Trojan can't be done in a district office, it can't be done in a high school, it can't be done in an elementary school. It needs to happen as a community. So in order for us to kind of pursue what habits and what skills that transcend academics, we need to work and build students into be successful in whatever they go into in life. We know that we need to communicate and we need to engage all community, not just educators, all community, local businesses, parents, you name it. If they live in the district, they need to have a say and a voice in identifying this why. How we're going to do this, throughout the next year, we're going to engage the community in a number of different ways to try to get their feedback and get them to view what are habits that we identified that make for a successful person? What are habits that make for a successful Trojan? And we're going to do that through surveys, we're going to do that through focus groups where we invite people face-to-face in the district office and kind of walk through this. But our goal is to uncover and understand what are the expectations and what are the beliefs of our community in terms of what habits should we be working and building in our students beyond just math and literacy and science understanding so that we create that whole person? So when they go into the workforce, when they go into, you know, post-secondary education, when they go into the military, being a Tulpa-Hockin Trojan is so much more than being a strong academic student. It's about being a strong academic student and a stud when it comes to positive habits, attributes, and traits. And then the what, ultimately, everything that we do has to start with that why, as Dr. Mack like said, because if you are rooted in your beliefs and your purpose, what you do just portrays that. So the portrait, in the end, will become our, our North Star. It becomes a guiding thing for us day-to-day where the expectations and habits for all Trojans can be held to that standard. Early in the conversation, Dr. Nessing had mentioned earlier, we started with the Portrait of a Trojan looking at it from the lens of a student or looking at it from the lens of a graduate. But we landed on Trojan because Trojan encapsulates all. And the habits that we identify that will make for a successful Trojan, make for a successful Trojan whether it's any of us in this room as adults in what we do or the students that we serve. So this Trojan, this Portrait of a Trojan is going to exemplify the habits that everyone can accomplish. Everyone can model, but more importantly, these are habits that we're going to intentionally teach. We're going to intentionally incorporate learning goals or lessons that allow for productive struggle and discourse so that students can build the habits. So our goal is to set a clear and common goal that's rooted in what we think are essential habits to make for a successful person. But the key is, we can't come to you today and say, hey, here's the habits we think are valued. Again, that would be going completely against our, our beliefs. So our goal right now is, you know, here's some examples. Stephen Covey wrote several books, but one of them is The Seven Habits of Highly Successful People. What we want to do is, we want to engage the entire Tulpa-Hockin community and determine what are our habits that we feel make for highly successful Trojans? So all next year, the goal is to identify those habits, define those habits, and ultimately create a visual image that we can kind of keep going back to. And different schools have different images, but we want to kind of create this emblem by the end of the year that we can hang our hat on and say, this is what it means to be a Tulpa-Hockin Trojan. It's not just about the academics, it's about the habits as well, and together, we're making for a complete, well-rounded person who can serve the community in any capacity in a tremendous way, and that is proud and reflective of what we produce here at Tulpa-Hockin. But again, to do that, it's going to take all of us to accomplish this vision. So, it's going to take all of us to identify those habits. And Mr. Hammerick can kind of walk you through what the timeline looks like next year and what we plan to do so that we can go from this conceptual idea of what we want to create and ultimately, this time next year, our goal is to have an image for you with our habits identified, and we start to incorporate that into everything that we do.
So without being redundant, I just want to kind of go back briefly and talk about our Tulpa-Hockin family. So when we launched the IU for our training in the work of Portrait of a Graduate, we realized very quickly that it's not necessarily for us, it's not what we want to do. Just because everyone else is doing it, it's trending, doesn't mean it's something that we have to do. And we started to develop a look at what makes sense for us as our Tulpa-Hockin community, our Tulpa-Hockin family. And it was doing that shared responsibility, that if we are establishing these habits, that these habits are going to be for our cooks, our custodians, our teachers, our principals, everybody, all on the same page, all feeding this great community that we have. So when we have the portrait, that is going to be developed by all of our stakeholders and all of our community members and our business leaders, everybody involved. We're going to have it fully incorporated and fully integrated through all academic systems, and we're going to have it incorporated and integrated throughout all of our systems and faculty. It'll be part of the lesson plans, part of our advisory period, we'll have mini-lessons, focus groups. This is something that we can continue to pull back on throughout the entire educational process. The difference between hard skills and human skills. We do not want to sit back and say, this is exactly, the state determines what our assessments are, what our changes are, but we as a family, we as a community are going to say, no, this is what we see from businesses that our students need. Our timeline, we are wrapping up our work for the portrait this year. We're presenting it to you tonight. We are going to reconvene and we're going to dive back into this work in the start of August. We will be talking to staff on opening day about the portrait, get them on board. And we're also going to be issuing some information to the Tulpa-Hockin Times. The survey will be on hard copy by request. September 23 is when the surveys and communication goes out. Drive team members engage stakeholders personally, or there's personal connections with our drive team and some of our members. And then we all work together to look at that data and start to develop themes and little, little get isolated in those habits. We also will have a back-to-school thing with focus groups. And then we, our work will start in the winter by designing the portrait itself. And then we will start with a rough draft in an image in March and bring to the board back again in the end of next school year. Ultimately, we want to develop, like Dr. Perk was saying, a visual, an idea, an identity that will say, this is what all of our Trojans will be leaving this grid. But, not only that, our community members will be carrying through because it's came from grassroots effort, it came from our families, it came from, and it's going back into this school. Ready for questions for either Dr. Perk or Maxup?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that ends my review.
All right, we're going to move on. Are there any students or students wishing to address the board pertaining to agenda items open?
Say none. We'll move on to the finance. Mr. Hammerick?
This will be for next week. And we're going to approve the, approve the adopted budget for the 23-24 schooling year with projected expenditures of $40,124,000 in projected revenues. thousand dollars and projected revenues of fifty-nine million one hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred and sixteen, including a real estate tax bill rate of twenty-five point eight zero, Act five eleven per capita tax of five dollars, school code section six seventy-nine per capita tax of five dollars, then half a percent parent income tax and half a percent real estate. As it says here, all numbers are based on preliminary budget, so we can fire it.
Those numbers will change, and that's twenty-five, forty-eight mils, there's a reduction of point one mils. I'll just go over the rest. Any questions on the budget? I'll just be going through these.
So we're spending more than's coming in?
By about, as of now, it's about a hundred and seventy thousand dollar difference. But our budgetary reserve is a hundred and seventy-five thousand, so really it comes to wash. We have, we don't usually, that's just there for emergencies, so it's pretty close to be a balanced budget. The home state farmstead exclusion is a little bit more than it was last year for the home state farmstead properties. It's two hundred and seventy dollars and ten cents. Last year it was two sixty-six, sixty-nine, so it's an increase of three dollars because there were less properties this year. There was three thousand twenty-five properties this year, last year there's three thousand six four. The amount is roughly the same at eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars that we're getting from state for that property tax reduction. The tax resolution is just going to simply state the millet rate and the rates for the per capita taxes and other taxes. And D is allow us to make journal entries after June thirtieth, put them back to June thirtieth as we prepare for the audit, with the audit standard practice. And committing funds for the categories for the committed fund balances, we just need to name these three items that we have currently in place, special education, athletic facility improvements, and curriculum. At the end of the audit in October, we'll decide what dollar amounts we can put in those, in those parts.
So is there any potential warehouse transfers that you're aware of that aren't budgeted?
There's none that I'm aware of. You know, we've made a transfer.
Like they sell and we collect real estate tax?
I'm not aware of any, but I'm hoping that Amazon purchases that property. Apparently, don't like Colony, would admit by, I'm hoping they purchase it. I don't, I don't have that budget. That's, my guess is it would be worth about one hundred and twenty million dollars based on the, based on the infrastructure improvements. Now, they did the infrastructure improvements, and it went from thirty-eight million to forty-five, forty-four million, went up like sixty, sixty million dollars because of what they did inside. So that was reassessed already, so. The three other warehouses that are out at the Fries Town, they are currently assessed and on the books for this, this current real estate, those get taxed here, so. There, there's really nothing else that's, I have projected as, as coming up other than, as an interim, there's an airport road, there's a warehouse being started, so there's a good chance that won't be done until later in the year, so we don't count on that for much.
What percent of the proposed state subsidy do you have?
About half of it.
Half of the proposed increase?
Of the proposed increase, yes.
It's about one ninety percent.
Yeah. Currently have an increase of, well, this increase of, from last year of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the basic debt, but last year it wasn't, was more than it was expected to be. So we're putting in about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in basic. Specialist, roughly the same. There is an additional mental health subsidy that we're planning on getting, a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, but if we don't get that, things we have planned are going to, are going to.
The bus, we'll tax the bus. How's that?
That's in there, it's in with transportation.
What did you figure for the new bond for the project that comes in favorably?
The payment?
Like is that, that's figured in?
Yes, that's figured in, and it's been adjusted based on interest rates too. That service is increasing by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Does that fall away?
Big time, yeah.
So if we come in less than that, we'll of course be better off.
Right.
Do I have all the personnel possible increases?
Yes. There's some, some things I don't have, the insurance amounts, I don't have the property insurance, there's some things I don't have yet, so. And when we finalize the salary, there will be some changes in future salaries.
Do you want to have a state budget?
No. We never can, never really count on that anyway, because they educate us.
Moving on to personnel, Mr. Palmer.
First one, first, I think that's out of the chair, it's all. First one is five, three, A, I knew that we approved the following now, care of personnel for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year at the state of Stipend, Stipend as listed there.
Thanks, sir. Any comments? Roll call?
Patrick.
Yes.
Spider?
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes. Five, B, I knew that we rescind the following supplemental contracts for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year as listed there.
Thanks, sir. Any comments? Roll call?
Spider?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes. Five, C, I knew that we rescind the supplemental contract for the following fall coach position for the twenty-three, twenty-four sports season as listed.
Thanks, sir. Any comments? Roll call?
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Spider?
Yes. Five, D, I knew that we approved the resignation of Kristen Terrell, Learning Support Parapresional at Bethel Elementary School effective six, one, twenty-three.
Thanks, sir. Any comments? All those in favor who consent to say aye? All aye. Those no, no one cares?
Five, E, I knew that we approved the following professional staff salary adjustment, adjustments based on credit attainment according to the collective bargaining agreement as listed there.
Thanks, sir. Any comments? Roll call?
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Spider?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Five, F, I knew that we approved the following appointments, Sierra Edschberger as an elementary autistic support teacher at Bethel Elementary, a salary of fifty-eight, six, one, three, step four M, effective the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Haley Butler as a district school psychologist, a salary of sixty thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars, step one M plus thirty, effective twenty-three, twenty-four school year with the ability to work up to eight summer, summer years, summer days prior to the start of the school year. And Anthony Kreiser as a full-time custodian at Bethel Elementary in the outer area fifteen, fifty, effective six, seven, twenty-three, pending completion of paperwork.
Thanks, sir. Any comments? Roll call?
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Spider?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes. Five, G, I knew that we retroactively approved the following substitute classified staff, events staff for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Do you see what's the names?
Thanks, sir. Any comments? Roll call?
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Spider?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Five, Y, I knew that we approved a voluntary teacher for the extended school year, December of twenty-twenty-three, Sierra Edschberger and Logan Hurn.
Thanks, sir. Any comments? Roll call?
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Spider?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Five, Y, I knew that we approved supplemental contracts for the following winter season coaching positions for the twenty-three, twenty-four sports season as listed there.
Thanks, sir. Any comments? Roll call?
Patrick?
Yes.
Spider?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Spider?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Spider?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes. Five, G, I knew that we retroactively approved the following substitute classified staff, events staff for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Do you see what's the names?
Thanks, sir. Any comments? Roll call?
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Spider?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Spider?
Yes. Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Spider?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Spider?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Spider?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Spider?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Spider?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Spider?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Spider?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Spider?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Spider?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
And I just got one compliment, it's always nice to see when we hire a teacher that was a graduate of Tolu'ahakian. That's always a nice thing to see.
We are very excited to have you on. All right, moving on to policy, Mr. Hack.
All right. All right, A is, if secondary or final approval to public policy to be joining homeless students.
And Mr. Palmer will take care of curriculum and items for board action for us.
A, A is approve the affiliation agreement to the Tolu'ahakian area school district and Kushtown University. What does that entail? Those student teachers or?
Yes.
Okay. For student teachers. B is approve the agreement with the Tambo area school district, students attend ACT program for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as presented. Eight, C, and they're all approved next meeting is the A R P, Esser funding proposal for staff professional development connected with mental health and.
Yeah, I just want to bring, to speak, to bring some context to this. For our Esser, we had to allocate a certain amount of money to go towards essentially mental health supports and professional learning. So to kind of give you an idea of this agreement and what led up to it, I wanted to just bring you up to speed with what our professional education committee has been doing all year.
And Josh, at the time, worked for a company that the whole purpose was professional learning. And recently I had reconnected with him because he started his own business, uh, which is called In Minds, and I shared the brochure with you. Josh was a secondary English educator, uh, at an alternative school that was working with students with incredibly challenging behaviors. And through his own professional learning, he has really developed some pretty phenomenal curriculum, um, and professional learning experiences that really showcase how stress impacts student behavior, how stress impacts their brain, and then multiply strategies and techniques that teachers can easily implement in their classroom. Not just help like the student become regulated and excel and be able to learn, they actually help the teacher as well, uh, because when you're working with dysregulated people, it's easy to get stressed out yourself. And again, we're not as effective in that capacity. But Josh, through his team, has actually built a team of phenomenal educators. And when I met with him, he shared this picture and I shared what our plan was as a professional learning committee. He was working with me to come up with a professional learning plan, uh, that we will, we're looking to engage his company to help lead, um, that is essentially professional learning that he personally is going to relate back to our focus areas. So what we're looking to do is in August, when we bring the staff back, is really doing a kickoff and giving like a, a trauma and stress and brain development one-on-one and helping start the conversation, start the education piece in trauma, mental health, and challenging navigating or navigating challenging behaviors. When we come back in October, we're looking at having a focus on the science of learning. So capitalizing on what we learned in August, revisiting it, but having the focus in October really be on learning and cognition and how we can get students to, to essentially take that in, but also be able to transfer that knowledge. In January, which is our third full day of professional learning, bringing that back and looking from a, through a staff lens and making sure that we're taking care of and having our staff be self-aware, um, and understanding how stress, uh, in our own life and working within a profession that's highly emotional impacts how we teach our students so that we're looking at it kind of full picture. And then we're also going to engage them in working with our leadership team to analyze our systems, to analyze what we do in our practices, whether it be discipline or student handbook or practices, to maybe that we are analyzing this through a neurodevelopment lens, um, so that we're better supporting the needs of the students with respect to the areas that we've identified. We toyed around with, uh, and this is not a definite, but even the parent night where some of those concepts of, you know, how stress impacts the brain of the developing child and, and different things of, of learning and, and regulation, that it wouldn't be a bad idea to explore an option where maybe at back to school, like we have them come in and also share that level of presentation just so that people have an opportunity if they want to learn, they can learn. But what was nice about In Minds, uh, the company, is that the staff that they have on hand directly correlates with what we're looking for needs. And we would like to bring them on board next year to kind of partner and walk alongside of us so that they can lead some of these sessions. And then Bill, you brought up professional learning for math and literacy. These would be one session, but we would essentially design a professional learning plan for teachers where this would be one class, if you will, of each of the days, but we would also incorporate professional learning for math and E L A. We would also incorporate some collaborative efforts with teachers.
I was just going to ask, how are you going to get all this done with everything?
Well, that's, that's the challenge, um, because there's so much we want to do, but we want to go, again, our goal is focus on a few things and do them very, very well versus trying to spread ourselves too thin and not do them well. And where we can offset with experts, bring experts in to run our staff through professional learning, and then some of the other stuff where we feel we're more experts on when it comes to math, literacy, and so the academic pieces, we can supplement and also add to it. So what I'm looking, what I'm seeking is approval essentially to partner with them. I was hoping to have a quote with respect to what this would, um, entail financially, but again, we have money set aside to investors that this would more than cover. And the goal is not to just bring this crew in, but also provide resources to our staff. So at the beginning of the year, we kind of give them a backpack of resources and, and information and things so that we don't just learn this and hope for application, but the goal is to support them so that what we learn transfers directly into the classroom and we're actually seeing some return on investment with our professional learning opportunities. So as soon as I have a quote, I will certainly share it, but I, I can a hundred percent guarantee it's not going to even come close to exceeding what we have set aside in our S R's. But hopefully for the next meeting, I can, I can have that for you. But I want to give you, again, a high level overview of where we got, so why we're even engaging this crew and what this, this company can do to support us.
Do you get us like a brief synopsis of what they would be working with or presented?
Absolutely, and that's what, I, I can share this with you. He had sent this to me, but I can share the learning objectives and the description.
I'd like to see it.
Yeah. Absolutely. And the nice part is we're not buying, we're not partnering with them with the intent to buy a presentation that they already created. They're creating a presentation based on what we want, which is a nice piece to this. Because I know some companies that do trauma in form of mental health supports, they have a menu and you say, I'd like this one, this one, this one. This crew did a different, they came in, sat with me, looked at the whiteboards that we have of all the work that the professional end committee did, and they said, oh yeah, we, we see these connections. We can, we can tailor what we do to meet your needs. So I'll share this and I'll share the learning objectives we established.
I was not crazy about their name In Minds because it makes me think if you're trying to get into those minds, it's, and I, you know, we're supposed to be teaching.
Absolutely.
I would like to see this one.
Absolutely. And it's, it's some overview and context, this company ultimately came about to serve adults as they work with children. But there are not a lot of companies that teach adults who are working with children how neurodevelopment works and how stress affects the brain, but then also on the backend support families.
It sounds good.
Absolutely, I'll share everything. And there's on the, should I share with you? There's, there's a link to their website as well. So there's, there's some information on there. But I will give you the learning objectives and kind of what the intent is going to be for those sessions.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Uh, nine is items for board action and it'll be approved the following job description which is administrative assistant for people services.
Moving on to administrative reports, um, you guys are listed there. Mr. Hammer.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to report that our high school field day was a great success this year. We had a ton of students who were able to participate. The national corps, uh, we teamed up with, they brought a huge giant rock wall and other activities, uh, and the F F A were doing their milkshakes. It was a great success, the kids had a blast. We had a great turnout for tractor day, there was a breakfast for the community, there was a ton of tractors this year, so really fun things at the end of the year. Graduation, um, was extremely successful. We just narrowly missed the rain. For anyone that was there, you could just sit there and see the rain circle around graduation, but we ended the commencement and then it started to rain. So fortunately, we did avoid the rain. Last but not least, I'd like to personally thank Mr. Leester. He is obviously retiring. We just wish him nothing but the best in all his future endeavors. He will be missed, but I know I'm extremely excited to work with Mrs. Parsons. I know she's very eager to get started and I know confidently that she is going to do a great job. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. A couple of things from the soon to be middle school. In towards the end of May, both, uh, Pemberville and Bethel Elementary, uh, sixth grade students were able to come up and visit. The junior high student council, uh, students, uh, stepped out of their classes and were able to give the students some tours. Mr. Johnson gave some information on extracurricular athletic information. Uh, I know I spoke with them personally and Mrs. Yancey, the school counselor, was able to provide them with lots of information, sample, schedule, um, how it works with lockers, things like that. And we will have them back, um, mid-August for our seventh grade orientation before school starts. Similar to what Mr. Hammer said, um, middle school or junior high field day was a great success and I'd give a shout out to Mrs. Carl and Mr. Avery for their help with that. Last Friday, we held our junior high awards ceremony. Uh, many families were able to make it in, uh, to celebrate all of the successes, both large and small, for all of our seventh and eighth grade students that morning. And then last but not least, uh, earlier this week, um, I did pull my staff into the library and do some in-service work, starting a conversation about what the transition from a junior high to a middle school looks like, um, comparing and contrasting the two different models, um, and you know, the similarities between them. So we started the conversation just scratching the surface and upon my return in August and moving forward, I will be working with them closely through that transition. Thank you.
Hello. Um, I just wanted to update everybody, on May twenty-fourth, we had the total Olympics, which was amazing. It was around thirty students from, uh, the elementaries and the licensed class at the high school on the soccer field. They participated in a kind of a field day game situation and some of our lovely students here helped, um, with the games, face painting. We also had barbecue, uh, provided by Mr. Leester and the girl club. And parents were happy, the kids were happy, and we hope to continue to do that next year.
Hello. Be a great end of the year. I'll shout out our field day as well. Mr. Dallas Bear, our kid bed teacher, did an amazing job. He was in early, both morning, he did the field all set up for our kids for field day. And a huge shout out to all our parent volunteers also that were able to come and help out stations, it was awesome. We had fifth grade graduation, which was super well attended, um, so we sent the students off to summer feeling very happy and ready for summer. Staff during our in-service time on Monday also utilized, um, their time to begin planning their back to school day. So although we're closing the door on one year, we're already talking about next year and we're excited to get that started too.
So I'd like to start off, um, by thanking our P T O for our field day, which was an all-day event this year. Half of it was done by our kid bed teacher, Mr. Bear, and the other half by the P T O. Um, and also pulling off an amazing beach bash, but it was perfect, it was extremely well-attended. I also want to thank Matt for lending me two of his rounds guys for a very hot Wednesday. They helped myself, another school volunteer, um, almost complete a walking path in one of our courtyard gardens, as well as build an eighteen-foot raised bed that we started some vegetables in, um, for the kids to be able to utilize that outdoor space. So I couldn't do it without Dennis and Alan's help. They worked all day, didn't complain, they were really excited. At one point, we had a student come out and help us, which is really nice to see them interact with the kids. Um, our final student recognition dinner was actually this evening, um, which we highlighted Pemberville students as well as junior senior high students that got student of the month the last quarter. And last but not least, again, I'd like to highlight Mrs. Holly Jo Torres for being the elementary teacher of the year. She came on board for a day?
Four.
Four days, um, and then we shut down. But in that time, she's made so many meaningful connections with not only students, but their families. So I just wanted to, again, highlight her and all of her achievements.
Good evening. I struggle putting my head and report together this evening just because May is very busy and a lot of great things happen. But I thought I'd start with just some figures from people services. We ended the year with three hundred and thirty-eight students that received special ed services. This is just over a ten percent increase from last year. So the department is definitely growing. We also finished with twenty-six students that received gifted services. This is just a slight increase from last year, uh, but it is something I'm working with, uh, our school psychologist, Miss Crystal Thompson, on to look at, um, our screening tools and making sure we're effectively allowing students to make sure they're getting the services they need. This year alone, we had ninety-two referrals for evaluations, so this can be from Aaron's store, from school staff. So a busy time for the department, but we're doing some great things. End of the year meetings I had with all the people service, uh, staff members, and one of the questions I asked them, a lot of it was just feedback from me, from Caitlin, about what we can do to just make next year better, make sure we're only moving forward. But one of the questions I asked was what was your biggest win this year, welcome year victory? And overwhelming majority response was the growth that they saw in their students. It wasn't academic, it was the growth in their independence, responsibility, social growth, and their overall growth as a person. Just for, I believe, last month, I highlighted Mrs. Torres in her classroom, uh, her students invited me to come in just to do another walk through, you had to see the growth that they had in responsibility and maturity, uh, which is even more evidence why she was our elementary teacher of the year. But really speaks to where the focus of the district, though, may be not well-rounded in trophy. The academic growth is important, but I think this will be important. Lastly, just to thank you for approving, um, Haley and Sierra, very excited to bring these two on board. I know, Mr. Palmer, you said it's great to see total hockey graduates. So I just wanted to share one of Sierra's answers in her interview, uh, when we asked why you want to work in total hockey, we had every interview with that question, she's had the best answer so far. She said she loves the district, she wanted to come back since she graduated, and she's looking to get back to the district and the community that served her so much over the year. So bringing these types of people on board is, we're all moving forward.
Good afternoon. Um, I just want to start off by giving a shout out to Megan Charles. She is one of our special ed teachers and is now one of our safety care trainers for the district, which, um, alongside myself, she and I will be training, um, actually starting this week and into next week, so I'll be very grateful to have her support with that. The other thing I wanted to mention, and Mrs. Parsons already jumped on board for this, but I wanted to give a huge shout out to her and thank her for, um, how much she did for that Special Olympics. That was such a neat event, and we had, we had our admin there running with kids, we had, um, students singing our national anthem, we had the turnout of parents and just students, the joy and everything that we got to see. She just worked really hard and I think that that was a really, really great event.
So I'm not going to punish anybody by calling you more than I have to. So, um, I did just want to point out in particular, Holly Jo, Rachel and Sierra, who were members of our committee, when I put out to everybody saying, and I know summer technically started yesterday, but if anybody would like to be able to come to be here to make sure I don't mess up when I present, um, just to support our efforts, um, the three of them did come out tonight to do that, so I think it speaks to their dedication overall, so I just wanted to call that off.
Do they have anything to add?
I told them that I wouldn't put them on the spot.
All right. May is always a super busy time in the cafeteria. Took care of the bus drivers on the eleventh, we had our annual bus driver breakfast here in the district office. And on the twelfth, we did something for the first time, we had a, a, I was calling it a beef promo, but it was a partnership with the Pennsylvania Beef Council. It was also part of their beef to schools program, which means they, uh, split the cost of the beef that day. We served the New York strip, um, sandwiches, so they were like a thin New York strip sandwich. We brought in two hundred and fifty sandwiches, we grilled about a hundred and sixty that day, did samples for the students, um, that was kind of the ticket. I don't think they were expecting the steaks to be as good as they were, being that it was, you know, their cafeterias, and we started sampling, they started buying them more. We had a table with information and representatives from the beef council there, along with some hamburger-shaped poppets, which, may anybody know what a poppet is? That's what all the kids know. And then I believe in your packet, uh, received a thank you letter, I had some pictures so you can kind of see what the day was like. And we're also listed on their summary flyer, which is the next paper in there. We were one of seven districts that participated and I definitely look forward to participating with that program next year. Uh, I think some of you were at the scholastic achievement banquet on the twenty-fourth. That went really well, two of our brand new employees, uh, were helping out and banquished, Judy Warner and Kim Frey Warner. And for being brand new employees, they just jumped right in, um, just kept coming and say, what do I do next? What do I do next? Because those things are very, they can be overwhelming, you can never underestimate them, but they did a great job. And, uh, finally, I just wanted to give a shout out to one of our employees at the high school, Marie Switzer. Oh, look, Marie, you're here tonight. So Marie, Marie works on one of the serving lines, so she would work on the serving line, the second serving line, for most of the school year, because we were short-staffed, I worked on the first serving line. So when I was doing Marie's evaluation this year, I made a point of saying, wow, it's just so impressive how that, even that last student that comes through the line, you have this smile on your face. And, you know, first student, last student, she's smiling, and it's kind of working the other line and realize how it can be challenging. They're not always polite, most are, but there's some, there's some challenges that go on through there, but Marie just smiles through it all. And then what's really cool about Marie is she finishes serving, she, you know, changes her gloves and she goes in and she then takes their dishes in and they all, they all go, thank you, thank you. And it's just the sweetest thing because they get, you know, she serves them and they finish, they're all thankful. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Marie.
I thought you did an amazing job with the food for this class to achieve a banquet.
I enjoyed it.
It, um, I don't get into the school to eat lunch, but it was not what I would consider school lunch. It was like a gourmet meal, so I know that everybody appreciates it, so thank you.
Oh, one last thing I forgot to mention with the leftover New York strip steaks. We did serve them for lunches throughout the rest of the school year, but we also offered them to the seniors for their breakfast, so they had to stay connected with the children.
All right, same day on the old business. Did you ever get anywhere with a pedagogue at Pemberville? I did not. How do you do this?
Never will miss anybody that's retired, but I will say that, uh, it's been fun to see Mr. Leester here all these years, I know he's not here today, but he always took it to have this smiling face and a lot of one-liners, right? And, uh, definitely get a, this year, that one-liner's from him. I guess this would be, I'm just thinking about that and reflecting back, I think, man, twelve years this year that I'm here on the board, so you see a lot of people have a common goal, and I thought, man, who's still, after twelve years, I think it's only common, but, uh, everybody else is new, but the team is, uh, well, obviously, but yeah, so it's, there's some uses here, right? Maybe if you retire, but, uh, sure goes on. That was, I just had to, I always had to pick on Mr. Leester, so, uh, we'll just, I guess, I don't know. Everybody else, I mean, if you're retirees, well, I know. I remember the driver's ed, I was thinking about that to a manager, that was one of the few times, again, that we had this place packed. We talked about taking the driver's ed, this room must have been packed. Got a couple other times it didn't have to be packed, but, uh, not all of them, so two. That's it, that's all I got with my, uh, two cents.
It was worth three.
To echo what, what Mr. Heck said, uh, you know, I'm kind of going to start, I jot down a couple notes, I wanted to say a couple things here to like, uh, you know, tractor day. We think about tub hockey, we're tractor days, like this big associated thing. But as I was cruising over to the school, I saw a young man sitting in the back of the room there, cruising down the group with his hood on, strapped tight, his Alice Chalmers, it's a tractor day, Mr. Savison, how many years young are you? How many years young are you? So that says a lot, but the community coming out for that event, and it, it was neat to see. And then, you know, we go into quote-unquote graduation, and, um, we're sitting there, coming out through, we're literally, Andy and I are looking at the radar along with all the other administrators, and we're like, for lack of better terms, shit, we're going to get whacked. And it just goes around us. And you look up, the stadium's full, probably the fullest that I've ever seen it, all to celebrate tub hockey. And yesterday, I had the opportunity to go to the end of the year, quote-unquote picnic and awards ceremony, but sit there and watch the staff all smile. and award ceremony, but sit there and watch the staff all smile and all as one. It's just amazing to see what we do for our kids at Topahakken. And to our administrators, like, I personally say thank you. This is the best team, and you've probably heard me say this before, this is the best team we've ever had. And I, I started here at kindergarten to now. Yes, we have a lot to learn, we have a lot to grow, we have a lot to get done, but instead of spinning our wheels, we finally got to moving. That's very exciting, and I commend you. And to the staff that's here, whether it's support staff in the cafeteria that's smiling at a kid, student, that is probably less than appreciative, and then they slam their tray back down, and you're still smiling to them? Again, it shows quote unquote that face of the Trojan, and that's what we all are. And it's so exciting, you know, I just, and the new hires that came on board, you know, Mr. Persson, a community member for so long, now is truly part of the team. And we're, we just keep growing, and it's so exciting. But I truly want to say thank you, you're years in here, I just, you don't know what it means to me to see that we're, we're finally the most important person to keep all together. Thank you, Dr. Dennis, because without you, not putting arms around everybody, we won't be good. Anything else? Calendar events looks very bleak, unfortunately. Looks like we got one thing left on the agenda, which is kind of exciting, but yet not exciting. Look forward to the next year. Anyone wishing to address the board decision?
We would.
Please state your name.
My name is Giselle Taveras. Caitlin Hare.
Olivia Burnham.
Sophie Jox.
Seth Palmer.
Okay, like I just said, hello, my name is Giselle Taveras. I'm here with fellow NHS members, and we would like to discuss the matters of Ms. Weidenheimer and her position as our NHS advisor. We just wanted to express our concerns with you guys, kind of give our voice to you guys a little bit. I had a question, did you guys by any chance receive our letters? Because we had letters made, we had over twenty-five letters written out to you guys. Have you guys seen any of that?
I have your letters.
What was that?
I have yours.
Okay.
So the answer would be no, board members did not get your letters.
Okay. Do you have them with you by any chance?
No.
Okay. Those letters were supposed to be sent out to you guys, but I'm sure Mr. Hammer will get around to that soon. I wanted to just give you guys a little piece of my letter. Let's see. Okay, so I would like to thank you in advance for reading this letter. As president of Topahakken's Mental Health Organization, Aveda, and as an NHS member, I hope my words are meaningful to you and allow you to reconsider your decision. I was astonished to hear about the removal of Ms. Weidenheimer's position. Ms. Weidenheimer is a wonderful teacher and a wonderful leader. I felt this was an arbitrary decision considering Ms. Weidenheimer's remarkable leadership skills. I and many other students are hurt that we were not given a voice in this matter. I would like to point out that not once has administration been there to see Ms. Weidenheimer's work. This entire year, we were, we had our meetings present, and we did not see an administrator. How is it justified that her position be questioned when not one administrator has seen her work? I could not envision someone more fit for this role. From what I gather, Ms. Weidenheimer has been the advisor of the NHS for thirteen years. I do not see how our administration could look past everything she has done for the school. I am puzzled as to how we could betray her in this way. Ms. Weidenheimer has done nothing but work hard for the students of the school and ensure that we deliver excellence each and every single time. Once again, how could we ignore this? As I look at the organizations this school has, NHS overshadows them, no one can run a better group than Ms. Weidenheimer. I and many other members fear for this program's future. I strongly believe that the future of a national honor society will deteriorate without her. I must remind you again that Ms. Weidenheimer has run the society for over thirteen years. I hope this letter and countless other letters you will receive show how much this decision impacts us. These letters do not justify or capture fully what she has done for us. We want to make it clear where we stand on this matter. We're a group of intellectuals and young adults, please treat us that way. Ms. Weidenheimer is an incredible person, teacher and leader. We did not up, we did not sign up for this role as NHS members, but we were voted into this role and accepted. With all due respect, Giselle Taveras.
Members of the school board, thank you for letting us speak today on this topic. Not only is this an important issue for you, but it will also impact us as students of Topahakken. So thank you again for letting our voices be heard. From the moment I stepped into Mrs. Weidenheimer's classroom, my life had been impacted in a positive way. She has taught me so much more than biology or the pillars of NHS are. She's a compassionate woman who has taught me how to be a leader, a change maker, and someone who wasn't afraid to stand up for themselves, all qualities I was geared into attain when entering my freshman year. When I got to return back to her classroom for NHS after not having her as my teacher for my sophomore year, I was elated. She is someone who I've always felt that I can trust, someone that, who I can go to when I've hit a crossroads and need advice to continue. She's a person who's pushed me beyond what I thought my limits were. Without her, I don't know where my academic journey would have gone. But it was her who encouraged me to get out of my comfort zone, and because of that, so many doors have opened for me, ones that I never thought were possible. Hearing the news that Mrs. Weidenheimer would not be next year's NHS advisor, I felt so many emotions. I was frustrated, I was angry, but most of all, I came to the realization that no one could ever fill the shoes that she did for us. Mrs. Weidenheimer, for me, is more than just an NHS advisor or a teacher. She's an advice giver, a mentor, a role model, and above all, a wonderful person that has left an impact on my life for the better. In whatever decision is made, I truly hope that you take our statements into account, as we have been taught by her firsthand, and know what an amazing, kind, and truly wonderful person she is, not only for NHS, but for all of Topahakken.
You asked me who I want as new NHS advisor. I ask you to reconsider. I feel there is no one else as suitable a position as Mrs. Weidenheimer is. I may not know what happened, so I cannot speak on that fact. However, I do know that she is a teacher that has and always will have my best interest at heart. This impacts us, the students who are the leaders of the student body. Yes, we are strong leaders, but how strong are we really without our strong leader? I've seen it in NHS and student council, the impact just one teacher can have on all the students. It took me a while to find my place at this school. I didn't feel like I fit in with most of the people here. Where I found my place was in student council and NHS, but my place was not found in these clubs themselves, but the people in them and the advisors in place. Mr. Slater and Mrs. Weidenheimer have made such an impact on the way I fit into this school. With Slater retiring and no longer running student council, it's difficult, but there is nothing that can be done about it. But Mrs. Weidenheimer is still here, so again, I ask you to please reconsider.
Sophie, would you like to read your letter?
I'm, I'm not going to read off my letter. I wasn't too prepared to do this. I just got home from Pittsburgh today, and I, I came straight from soccer practice, which is why I'm a little bit underdressed compared to others. But just a week ago, I was elected president of NHS for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, so I thought it was necessary that I come up here and, and share my thoughts on the matter. To be honest, there's nobody in the school building who is going to be able to run NHS the way that Weidenheimer runs it. I'm involved with a lot of the high school, basically at any club you can think of, I'm in, and none of them are running nearly as well as NHS. I wanted to make it clear that, you know, we still, we have full belief in our administration, and we're not hating on the administration at all. I have lots of confidence, and I trust Mr. Hammer and the rest of the administration a lot. But, you know, there is very few teachers who go out of their way to make the students feel comfortable and feel involved in the school. You know, we're losing one with Mr. Slater retiring, and, you know, Weidenheimer is one of a very small group, and I just feel like NHS isn't going to be the same without her as advisor.
With Weidenheimer being taken from her position, do you know who would take her
Do we know of anyone who's like ready to take her place?
We do, we did have a, we did have a teacher that, Mr. Ramford, do we? It would be on the agenda, I don't want to, I'm assuming that there'll be a discussion at the fourth level based off your comments, so I'll hold tight on who it is, but Mr. Hammer has worked with somebody to be able to fulfill that role. I'll hold that person's name until, or has the time to.
We were just eager here because I know that we were also asked to give our opinions on who we thought would be willing to fit that role. So considering that you guys did ask us, that's kind of part of the reason why we're here, to just express to you that we choose her, so. I also wanted to quote something that was said during this meeting today, Dr. Dennis, he said something great. He mentioned that it was hard to find people with skills that will make these students successful. I love that you said that, I admire it. I just wanted to point that out, and she's one of those people that we see as hard to find, and I just really hope that you guys reconsider.
You guys said some interesting things. I jotted down a couple things. Talked about the future of NHS. The future is you and the other students. You are really the leaders, and the administrator or the teacher is the guiding light. I don't know you students, I know Seth, I was thoroughly impressed by your graduation, reading the names, cool, calm, collected, just Joe Cole kind of leaning up there, not, not showing an ounce of anxiety or nervousness. And I thought, I asked him, who was I sitting next to? Mr., yeah, and I said, who are these guys? Because you did a phenomenal job, and you are the future of NHS, future graduates of our school, and, and future hopefully of our local community here. So a couple of things I wrote down here, somebody that you go to when, when you need somebody to trust, and somebody that has your best interest at heart. I don't think anybody's disputing that. Hopefully, all of our teachers and administrators have your best interests at heart, and I don't think anybody's trying to take that away. Sometimes, in my world outside of the school district, giving somebody else an opportunity to, to take on a new role, even if it's just temporary, provides a chance for them to flourish and to show what they can do, and maybe that's not a permanent role for them, maybe they can go out and do another club thing, or become an administrator in the school. Sometimes when someone's in a position for so long, it's great to see someone else have another opportunity to have their chance at showing what they can do. So not saying that any of us have made a decision here, and certainly I'm a small percentage of that decision, but I think your comments are, are valid, I share your concerns when, when there's somebody that you know and trust, but don't discount yourselves as, as the leaders. And no matter who's in the role in the future, you'll be the ones leading the charge for sure.
Thank you, I really appreciate your words. Does anyone else have any comments for us?
Tackle what he said, you know, NHS isn't going. And you guys are leaders, that's what I was thinking the whole time. You guys, it's just an advisor. They're just there to keep you going. I mean, it's same as, you know, I think we have a Barbie club, correct?
We do have a Barbie club, my son has a.
You know, it's the same, same thing. You guys have that direct, direct. And by your presentation here tonight, this is a big pet peeve, and I'm going to pick on you for it, it's Mrs. Weidenheimer, and it's Mr. or Dr. or not Dr. Dennis or not Weidenheimer, it's just a pet peeve of mine. But your leadership here, you guys are, no matter what happens, or what's the future for the students.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for your comment, and though, you know, NHS is not going anywhere, you know, the first year members who are juniors, you know, are still staying around. I've seen clubs, I've seen, you know, organizations outside of the school, that when leadership gets replaced that is doing really well, things start to take a turn for the worse. And that's what we're really worried for, you know, we know that NHS is still going to exist, and that we're still going to do good things. We're just worried that we're not going to be able to do them at the same capacity that we could with Mrs. Weidenheimer, and that that really great structure that we had with her, you know, she planned all of these things out for us, these service trips that we went on. She said, okay, what do you want to do? She had these contacts, she reached out to these people, and she was able to make a lot of great things happen, happen for us. I remember this year, we went to a nursing home, that was over a contact that she had, that she worked really hard to get us in there because of COVID restrictions still, that are still ongoing in there. So I think a lot of us, you know, we're not necessarily worried that NHS is, you know, going to crumble or anything like that without Mrs. Weidenheimer, but we're just worried that it's going to take a direction that I think not everyone's going to be happy with, and it's not going to stay the same way it's been for fourteen years, and it's been running wonderfully.
Yeah, and just to add on to a little bit what Caitlin said, and kind of pull a little bit of what you guys said, it's not, maybe to you guys on this end, it's not, to you it's just an advisor, but this directly impacts us, and that's why we're here tonight, because we are directly being, being impacted by the decision. A lot of us were hurt that we didn't get a say in this, we weren't really given much information to take course, we were confused, we, this was out of the blue for us, weren't given much contact or anything, and Ms. Weidenheimer had this information for a very long time, and we were not aware, and, you know, she kept a strong face for us, she did not disturb our year. She allowed us to have a wonderful year with NHS, and just allowed us to continue to look at our future. She did not bear us with things that were paining her, and she just led so strongly, and I just admire her for that, and I, I don't want us to betray her. And I respect you guys, I do, but I really hope that our voices are being heard right now.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you as well, you guys did a wonderful job, top leadership here by, first of all, coming to speak to the board, you, you know, there was always a challenge, you guys did very well. I just want to say thank you for coming and pushing your opinions. Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to say that I'm a little disappointed that if these students here wanted the board to have letters forwarded to us with their concerns, twenty-five letters, that it was kind of hidden from the board. And I also go on record to say that it's not the first time stuff was hidden by the board, and I've received phone calls. Unfortunately, none of these young ladies got ahold of me, but very disappointed that these letters were not forwarded to us either in paper or an email for us all to read.
So, Mr. Hammer, I mean, I'll deal with it. As far as the letters, Mr. Hammer and I did read all of the letters. They were very well written, we were very impressed. And Mr. Hammer did indicate that the letters were there, went down to the office the next day, and I know he talked to a lot of people as well about that. The letters were not, majority of the letters were addressed to the administration, and had we known that the indication that, that the intent was to be the board, we would have sent them to the board. Our understanding was that they were meant for, Mr. Hammer and I, since we were the ones that had come to meet with each of you. But had they been, had the intent been, or we were told that that was to be, to the board, we would have provided that. I, I will say that I take great exception to the fact that the accusation that we are hiding anything as an administration, I don't think, there's nothing that any of us are hiding from anybody. The one thing that we need to put in perspective is that there are lenses which all of us look through. You know, there are certain things that as a superintendent, as a principal, as an administrator, that I can tell and I cannot tell. But there are certain things that some people have the ability to tell. You know, that day that we met, Mrs. Weidenheimer had the opportunity to clear the air, she had the opportunity to speak. There are certain things restricted that I cannot share. And the only thing I will say is there's always two sides to things. There's a lot of things that are presented publicly that cannot be then presented publicly. And so, you know, there was a decision made in the situation where Mrs. Weidenheimer was removed as the advisor. But I do have, you know, I do have the utmost respect. We did read every word of those letters. As I mentioned, they were very well written, and if we thought, and I will apologize, if we thought at any point that they were intended for the entire board, we would have given them to the board.
Could it be possible that regardless, we still make sure that the board does get the first option? Okay, thank you.
And for, for what it's worth, Topahakken.org, every one of us is on there. You know, you know what I mean, like, if you want something to come to our
You know, you know what I mean, like if you want something to come to us, that will come to us. Again, great job, you really did.
Yeah, thank you guys for, you know, letting us come up here and having us talk and having a big conversation and not just, you know, shut it down in our faces and say, well, it is what it is, we appreciate that.
Yeah, we appreciate you guys for submitting your photographs.
Can I say one more thing? These are the leaders of our school and it's so impressive for them to come here and talk for this in front of this school board. When we talk about family, we have to make tough decisions sometimes, but we sit together as a group and figure it out, so. Great job, guys, thank you.
Who else?
I just had a comment, yeah. I've been coming out for a couple of years to school board meetings and our National Honor Society, I don't know anything about Mrs. Weidenheimer or anything, but you get there by academic achievement, right?
And you are.
Yay, yay, yay. This is the first time I've really heard about academic achievement. I sit here every month sometimes and hear about all the fun things we do and we have dress days and we have all kinds of days, but I rarely hear from you guys on your academic achievement. I would want to think that all the principals would be saying, hey, 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 this is the academic achievement that we've seen. And I don't hear that, month after month, I don't hear that. And I don't know if it's a whole new equity thing going on that we can't make the underachievers not feel good by saying yay to the achievers, but somewhere down the line, when we graduate from high school and we go to college and we get jobs, the achievers, still, you guys do interviews. Who do you pick? The achievers, the people with goals. Not to say that everybody isn't worthy, but I'm happy to hear from you guys. And my question before they even said anything was GPAs. Does Topahakim embrace GPAs and do we calculate them?
Yes.
Do we go by them and when do we start? I would want to think we start in third grade, once you're getting grades, not just beyond, you know, need improvement, whatever. I would want to think, the school that my daughter teaches at, at any moment, there's calculations that you can just press a person's thing and get their standing GPA. Can we do that here?
With our high schools?
Junior, oh, so in high school you start, not elementary school or junior high? When do you start? Junior high?
Ninth grade.
Elementary? No? Junior high?
High school.
High school, ninth grade.
Credit.
Seventh grade?
Ninth.
Ninth grade?
Yes.
So until then, you don't recognize how you place students? Like, how do you, we have a concern, because we have a child graduating, the sixth grade, and a couple of months ago, they were hot on choosing, you had to choose three clubs you wanted to join. Oh, okay, we'll choose the club, but what, what are their courses? Like, when do you start saying, hey, here's, here's where you're tracking? Are you tracking college prep? Do we even do that anymore? Do you track college prep, academic? So you do that, but only in ninth grade? So until then, you're just in this nebulous group, like the ones that are overachievers have to slim it down and the ones that are underachievers, yes, I don't understand.
We start, we start looking at that very early and if there's gifted students, for example, they might progress in a higher track, there's honors sections, the kids can go into the honors section and once they get to high school, they can continue that, but then also they can take AP classes, they can take college courses with us, so that progression comes from basically their grades and how well they do in those classes.
Oh, huh, we did contact, well, we contacted the elementary guidance counselor because, okay, it was Dawn,
but nobody said anything, so what do we do? Like, is there course selection? And she just said, oh, I don't know anything about that, I don't, I don't know anything about junior high. So we're like, okay, I don't know, when does this happen?
So she's picking.
How would you place them?
So she's picking.
Or should I just talk to you personally?
We can, we can talk personally, but generally speaking, teacher recommendation plays a heavy role and on top of their grades in sixth grade, kind of leading them in the direction of if they're going to be in an honors course for one of the four core subject areas or not. And then in regards to some of those specialized classes, we did look at, are they participating in courses and band already? To try and keep them in that, in those programs as well as having more of an exploratory mindset in regards to art, computer, eighth grade, STEM, things of that nature.
Because I was starting to get worried till I heard from this group, I was honestly starting to get worried. Like, are you keeping track of all these kids that are getting As? Like, do we know them or do we not know them, so?
Yes, we do, and we did highlight at the junior high award ceremony, many of the students that did have As and Bs throughout the entire course of the year as well as the students that did earn As in certain courses throughout the entire course of the year. But yeah, feel free to reach out and we can talk with them.
Let's not forget to get in our students engaged in these fun events, help them with learning.
Sure, yeah, yes, but my point is, I hear a lot of fun, I don't hear much from the academic kids, so there has to be a lovely balance, too.
I think every, every meeting we have, we honor our students of the month. That is the majority of our academics. It's our students that rise to the top in listening to where they're headed. They have very high lofty goals consistently. Every quarter, we issue report cards, that's numeric. But at the elementary level, a GPA doesn't serve us. You know, at the high school level, there is still valedictory and salutary and those are still two pieces at graduation that are honored and take prominence in that ceremony. That's where the GPA really takes hold. The grade reports are an indication of where we place students if they're in honors at the secondary level. But really, the GPA is center or around placement of more or less colleges where they need to be and ranking when it comes to salutary and valedictory, if that makes sense.
And I do hear the students of the month, I just never understood the criteria. Is it always the academic achievement or is it just based on?
That's part of it, there's academics, there's part of, you know, it could be something that they achieved or are doing within that curriculum or within that class that the teachers feel that that person's worthy to be elevated and kind of displayed.
I think Mr. Reckler said food was really good at the academic achievement of the banquet.
It was, and so is the turnout of highly achieving, so it is, it is definitely recognized.
But sure, it does, at times it does not, it does not take center stage all the time. And that is, and that is something, you know, that's something we do take for granted. These are special events that, you know, we do highlight, but we do take academics very seriously.
I would just like to thank the students for coming in. Now, I've been on that side when I was your age and it is a hard thing to do and come and fight for something and you did a much better than I did when I was your age and you were very well spoken. And I think being able to speak publicly like that is so important, like begin with, express yourself. I really appreciate you coming to stand up for me a little bit, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, cafeteria workers would like to know when you're going to negotiate a higher pay raise for the rest of workers. We had our evaluation with Jill and she said that we would kind of talk about getting pay raises for the base rate and continue on up.
What was your, what was your name again?
Diane.
Diane.
Luna Dast.
We are having executive session at the U of H, your reviews were just completed. I'm not sure if I was in the meeting or none of us were present in the meeting, but we do recognize that salary adjustments are part of, you know, evaluations. I, I don't simply know what you're asking, you weren't very direct.
Well, Jill was saying that you were learning to negotiate on changing the base rate and then the rest of the employees would get a bonus on what they were getting also.
So what, what, we've been working on and it is not finalized, so it would be, you know, the hope is as we finalize it, that it would be up for approval in future meetings. But what we've been doing is, as all industries are doing, we are constantly reviewing what our base rates are, where our staff salaries are to be able to stay competitive. You know, we realize as an organization that twelve fifty as a starting rate is extremely low, it's not competitive. You know, we monitor, you know, local businesses, like Sheeps, we watch some of our local pizzas places, our restaurants, what they're doing, we monitor where the warehouses are. And so, yes, that is something that we have been monitoring. You know, remember last year, we did increase rates and actually goes back three, four years that we slowly moved up. At one point, we were nine dollars an hour, the starting rate, and over the years, we've adjusted to twelve fifty. But we also realized that that's not even anywhere near close to where we need to be and so that's what we're finalizing. So, it was not on the agenda tonight because we're just not ready to vote on it yet. But we are, we are walking through that.
So you're going to let us know before the next school year?
Yes, yes.
They'll probably be done for budget by recent.
More than likely it will be up for vote by the next school year, I would say.
All right, because I'll be looking for another job if you don't give us a, like, just can't live on twelve fifty an hour, you know, something would happen to my husband, how am I going to survive?
Letters go out every year after the board votes to everybody. I try to get them out before July one. I'm not sure, I don't have in my head how many years you've worked here, but I'm sure some of the other cafeteria workers who have worked here can tell you, sorry, sending employee. Usually by July one, you will have the letter standing where your increase was and all that broken down.
All right, we will be having an executive session for personnel and real estate and safety and security. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Seth.
Hammer? I have a very important meeting to adjourn.